Gents, I'd like to link this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, foundation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm recording any exact sentences. Before the public comment that just was linked to, I want to say something about, you know, killing of a woman on the train in Charlotte then, nobody helped her, and then today what happened with Charlie Kirk, being shot just basically because of his political views, there's no place for that in our country. We can disagree, but we don't have to hate each other, but we can kill each other over, basically, what does amount, in the end, when you think about it. So, it's just, it's just one of those two things, like, the poor woman survived the Ukraine war, comes to this country and is stabbed to death and, and nobody went to rape. We're better than that, as the United States of America, and then what happened today with Charlie Kirk, we're better than that too. That type of violence is no place in our country, so. Like to move on to meeting and public comment?
Yeah.
How was lunch today? What did you make?
Very good. Burgers, all of them, a bunch of salads, Linda and Chris helped out, so.
Thank you, guys.
They were fed good over there.
Thank you. Well, kind of.
Eat some lots.
All their, 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 eat some lots, I mean, not.
Speaking of disagreeing and not hating every, each other, you know, that's, good, good we have this forum, but again, prayers to both of those families that lost a look when it's senseless. But anyway, moving on, the appeals, hats off to everybody over there, not only the clerks working from here, but the actual people that are working, that were hired just for this. Many are working through their lunch breaks or getting very short lunch breaks because it's just very busy. People, I mean, we're trying to give them as much time as possible, they're getting extra time. I think everything's going pretty smoothly over there. Again, there was two more occurrences, I think, since the last time I mentioned it, people being a little disruptive and ignorant to some of the employees. I know a board, a board had to empty out the other day to take care of something at the front desk. So again, I'm just putting on record that I understand they might be a little short-staffed here, but you have forty people over there, and now just with that senseless act today, in a college, people are on the verge of what they think is losing their property. If somebody comes in there and does something, I know you've been advocating for it, Larry, but I think you just need to take a deeper look into it, especially after today. So again.
I thought you were so groovy about it, like, they, like, yeah, when the incident happened, I thought, it was.
I'm imploring, I'm imploring that you guys do something about it, because, no offense, you have Karen over there who's doing a fantastic job, not her head spinning around, like I said, but when I was, something I meant to be nice about, but she's literally behind a desk with twelve inches to get out if there, an emergency happens. So, again, just looking out for the people over there, hopefully you guys consider it or can make something happen.
I started looking at the private security.
Okay. Mr. Barr, not sure where he's been, uh, he hasn't been there in quite some time, a lot of the people over there recognizing that, uh, maybe he got a seven million dollar check and failed, but I know I've asked and other people have asked for formulas, neighborhoods, base acres, grades, explanations on those, so we have a better understanding of things. Uh, we have still yet to get those. I mean, yesterday, we had an incident where a home, fully, own home was listed as a metal shed, so people need to do their homework on their own when they come in and make sure everything's right, the acreage, the outbuildings, confirm everything.
Jeff, these are, as far as the, the ones I sat in on, they are asking, is your information correct? Is your house, is it your thing?
That's, the first thing that the clerk does, they go over everything, make sure the camera card's correct. If you have all the outbuildings, they correct that stuff. Uh, we had some issues with addresses, but I talked to Scott Crater, he's handling most of those, so everything seems to be good with that. Uh, has there been mold in the courtrooms that were, that was removed recently?
There was not, like, there was no stores.
Okay.
And it's, it was professionally cleaned.
Okay.
Yes, it was on hold.
Okay. And then, since I didn't start out with my normal, yes, Stevens, which I'm sure we still don't have any updates on that, and Ms. Gaffney, I'd want to move quick to some information from a right-to-know request. Uh, this is from Connor Matts, in regards to time swipe requests, which is requested, due to security concerns, we will not release swipe information from employees of the county. I know that from previous times with, uh, Mr. Hal Kovach and his disgusting acts, but most people are expected to be here from eight-thirty to four-thirty, so if someone was quote-unquote stalking someone, or wanted to harm them in any way, they would probably show up at eight-thirty and wait for, four-thirty and wait for them. So, I'm not quite sure why the time swipes are not being released, but we'll let that for the courts to decide. Uh, moving on to Sharon Yakich's affidavit here, she replied that time and attendance records and time sheets are not kept by the controller's office for elected officials. I think we need to start that, has nothing to do with Sharon, I was just her answer, but I think that's something that we need to do. Uh, Mr. Kern gave an email, I don't think he did an affidavit, but there was an email, on May ninth, uh, this is regarding Teresa Fanny, F-A-N-N-E-Y, assuming that's Teresa Gaffney, I'm not sure if he understands who his people are in the building, or maybe it's just because she's not here, so nobody knows who she is. But regarding Teresa Fanny, he has no leave documentation, FMLA requests, no sick or vacation approvals, denials, correspondence regarding absences, and no medical certification submitted for leave purposes. He's also not aware of any investigative records, whistleblower complaints, disciplinary actions against Teresa from January first to present. How does one become a whistleblower or do an anonymous complaint in the courthouse if there's no complaint forms or avenue to do that? That is my re, that is my question. Does anybody?
There is, we have the anonymous, uh, the phone number to be calling to for anonymous complaints, they can grant something to drop it, and there's also, they can go, call, call correct with third party to file a complaint, to, uh.
For harassment.
For harassment, but even other things, there's other avenues to follow, like.
Well, you don't need a form, they just file it, it's a bit of a re.
Through the complaint, they're going to file it.
And who does that go to?
Uh, someone would go, it could go, I guess, to ELC, it could go to human resources, it could go to county administrator, it could go to.
Well, regardless of where it goes, it would get channeled in the right direction, so.
Yeah, like, there, there's avenues, well, for the commissioners.
And he also states in that same email on May ninth, "To my knowledge, I do not have any citizen, uh, do not have any citizens' complaints. I am aware that this has been a topic at the commissioners' meetings, but I do not keep official records of these meetings." If there's a complaint form, or not, a way that I could do it as a public, then, as a citizen's complaint, I think for over four hundred days now, I've mentioned it at every meeting I've been at, which is over ninety percent of the meetings, I've requested information on how she stated she was on FMLA after she was told by.
Hold on, can I give you a second? I answered you on this, an elected official is not entitled to, she should have never even made that statement because we're not entitled to FMLA.
I understand that, and Sharon explained that to me, and I know you were, and I know multiple elected official turnovers not to say that, but she still said it, but my thing is, I want her to come, the taxpayers deserve her to come here, okay, not her attorney threatening me with a lawsuit. She should come here and speak and explain why she said what she said. Uh, that, that's what I'm requesting, and for four hundred days now, it fell on deaf ears, except for a threat with a lawsuit.
I not defended her, but when I asked about it, she did tell me, she misspoke by saying she entitled to something like FMLA, not meaning, like, she was nervous and maybe misspoke me. I guess, that's the only thing I can pick on.
Okay. And in closing, the affidavit for Ms. Gaffney states, "With respect to a personal work calendar, I do not maintain a personal work calendar other than a registered wills court calendar." I guess that's saving ten bucks, because if you're never here, why have a calendar? You know, that makes it simple. You can go down T-102 and get one of their desktop calendars, and there wouldn't be any penny to get it. Uh, then in the last, "With respect to any complaints, attorney correspondence, or public feedback regarding office conduct or delays since January twenty twenty-five, there have been none, and I'm aware that there are no records in possession of my respect responsive to that request." She knows there's been complaints, there's been complaints for a year and a half about her lack of work and, uh, work ethic, so, again, something needs to be done with her. She's taking advantage of the taxpayers, and I hope at some point you guys look into that and handle it accordingly. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hey, Melinda.
Hello.
Melinda Diver, North Mountain, perfect time.
There you go.
Shout out for you, they want to make sure you didn't get loud.
Okay, enough of that. Uh, Melinda Diver, North Manheim Township. Okay, I'll kind of pick up, uh, where Jeff left off, talking about, uh, road officers who like to treat their position as a part-time position versus a full-time position for which they are handsomely paid, uh, a nice salary, benefits, a retirement package, et cetera. Why don't we follow the lead of some other counties surrounding us who have started paying their road officers as part-time employees? Well, I don't care whether it's the clerk of courts, recorder of deeds, the pro bonitary, register of wills, what have you. If they don't want to actually come in full-time for the taxpayers of Skookel County, then let's start paying them as part-time employees and cut out some of the bennies that they're getting. Does that make sense? Can we start maybe the process of looking into doing something like that to save the taxpayers of this county? Okay, all right, now we'll get back to, uh, talking about the appeals that are going on. Shirley, it's amazing how many people out in the west end of the county now, whereas before Shirley, Tammy, and Wendy out in the west end, so I'm gonna give a plug to their Facebook page, Save the West End of Skookel County. For how many years now have they been trying to wake up the people out in that end of the county to what is going on out there? Whether it's Stavola, whether it's NSP, whether it's Frank Kramis putting that stuff everywhere, so many people out there were sticking their heads in the sand and acting like, oh, what, what's the problem? We don't, we don't know what you're talking about. And granted, unless you live in Joliet, Tremont, Good Spring, that area, those people have it twenty-four-seven, day in and day out, but it does occasionally drift down to the Higgins Valley, Valley View, that area down in there. But I'm telling you what, with all the people that I'm seeing from the west end of the county with these appeals, and they're talking about how bad it is from NPS, or whatever that place is out there, and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, you don't even know the name of the company that's processing and taking in these biosalads, but they're wanting to try to get the credit because they maybe have to smell it every now and then. I hope every single homeowner in the Tremont, Joliet, and Good Spring area filed an appeal, because I tell you what, if I'm sitting on your board, you're gonna get at least a twenty percent deduction right off, okay?
That is inappropriate.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
They deserve.
They agree, they should appeal.
They deserve a discount for what they have to put up with, day in and day out. And you know, at this point, they should be actually maybe even submitting their laundry bills to the county, uh, or to DEP for reimbursement.
I'm not willing to, I'm gonna interrupt you.
I was kidding, Larry.
But I'm just saying, this county has, we have tried to do as much as we can with the power that we have, we have limited power, and we have advocated for people in the west end of the county, and have sent letters, and have still have sent letters, and still call them up about every time somebody calls and gets a complaint.
And where do you get, what do you get?
Well, that's, if, listen, if Harrisburg doesn't want to deal with it, they should give us the authority to deal with it, because if we have the authority to deal with it, it would be double.
And what have the state legislators, what have they said?
It's always DEP, it's always a DEP issue.
And they can't do anything, right?
Unless the EP does.
And they make, in a dollar short. So, anyway, Shirley, trying to help you out how I can, because I haven't brought it up in a while, and I think, hopefully, maybe some of these people that are trying to use that to get their assessment down will actually maybe check out the Facebook page, and there'll be, like, more people helping to kind of spread the word.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Go ahead, Chris. Uh, one in response to Melinda, they just received a notice of violation on August twenty-third.
NSP?
No line, just a, yes, just a notice of violation, which is a lot of crap.
And we've been inquiring, have the doors been put on, Shirley, because you're up there, did they put the doors on?
I think last week the doors were put on, that was part of the violation.
Yeah, because we've been asking about these doors are supposed to put on.
That isn't good.
I know, but they.
In my opinion, no.
Yeah, but that was one of the things we kept asking about, to put the doors on, so.
They were supposed to have been installed last week, to the best of my knowledge, you know, whether they were or not, I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll inquire. Any other public comment?
I would just like to announce that the county had a bid opening this morning for a road project in the borough of Kamakla, and that the bid will be awarded at a later date.
Okay. Any other public comment? So, let's move on to meeting.
She does.
Oh, Chrissy, sorry. Well, I was gonna let you do that under your.
No, I'm not doing it.
Oh, you're doing, she's, Jim Bartlett.
Let's not.
I'm doing a part thing tonight, listening.
All right, I'm gonna give a quick one.
Okay.
The formal appeal process is going very well, it's going way better than I thought it was gonna, to be honest with you. I agree with Jeff, we do gotta get some kind of security over that.
I agree.
Okay. Um, we have six appeal boards and a pool of twenty-nine appeal board members. Um, the boards hear the owner's presentation, and then they decide what changes to be made, if any are to be made. Some of the owners bring appraisals, evidence, some just bring pictures. Um, either way, the formal appeals do allow for adjustments to the default values from the mass appraisal process. The first batch of about three thousand decision orders is planned to be mailed on Monday, nine fifteen. The owner will have thirty days from the date of mailing of their notice of determination to file to the Court of Common Police for a scratch appeal for the court. What a scratch appeal is, is the appeal that you have with our board has nothing to do with it up there, you start from scratch, okay? Approximately eight thousand parcels filed for formal appeals, which means it's eight-point-five percent of the county. Appointment letters have been mailed to about two-thirds of those, with the rest coming soon. We are telling people, if they don't receive a, a letter telling them the date and the time by the first week of October, give us a call and we'll be able to look more into it, because we are still scheduling. Appeals will continue through September and October, and the new values are out, and new lowered miller rates will take effect for twenty-twenty-six tax bills.
One more time, what is the, if you haven't got a response by when?
First week of October.
First week of October, yes.
I'll maybe just, we get Tim a question, but when you're, as you're sending out the new change of values, when are they gonna be updated, the new values? Are they updated then, like, say you send out three thousand, are they updating them on the, the camera card then?
That would be a Tim question, and I could find out the exact date on that. I, I think he's doing the, I think it's all gonna be done in November.
Okay.
That's what I think, but, I mean, the letters are going out, the audit's going very well, so.
No, then the people, like, I, like Jeff said, and I've been over there numerous times, they're, they're doing the job, dealing with people, and it's, they're, if you would see, the appeals rooms are not very big. So you have county people come into a small space, and they're doing a good job. Our staff, the people on the boards, you know, you know, a few of the vision people that are there, I think.
They're definitely working as a team.
I think they're all doing a good job, I think, too. And, and everybody I've talked to, basically, that went through the appeals process, there's a few that grumbled, but everybody said they were, most of them are, they're treatable, respectful, they're allowed to speak, their attorney's allowed to speak, their appraiser's allowed to speak, if they have a family member with them, they are saying the people are being very accommodating, that are on the boards. I've been hearing nothing but good things about our people on the boards and how they're interacting with the public, with the people that put in appeals.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Or did I miss anybody else? Let's move on to the meeting. Can I have one from approving minutes from the August twenty-seventh meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And a question?
Commissioner Pador?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes. Can motion approve the September third minutes?
So moved.
Second.
A question?
Commissioner Pador?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
The motion approval was presented by the grand writers in our work session.
So moved, sir.
Second.
A question?
Commissioner Pador?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
The motion approval was presented by domestic relations in our work session.
So moved.
Second.
And a question?
Commissioner Pador?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
The motion approval was presented by human services and block minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, one question?
Commissioner Pador?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
The motion approval was presented by planning and zoning in our work session.
So moved.
Second.
And a question?
Commissioner Pador?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
The motion approval was presented by children and youth in our work session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And a question?
Commissioner Pador?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion approve, uh, three of the four repository sales in our present in our work session?
So moved, sir.
Second.
Other question?
Commissioner Pador?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Uh, new business finance officer.
Good evening, commissioners, uh, thank you. We have two items for information purposes only, to the adjustment of two hundred dollars to solid waste management budget, and then, on behalf of the Skookel County Transportation Authority, we're looking for supplemental budget for the recent resolutions with increases to the budgetary expenditure account for two-point-five million dollars, and the budget for revenue account for two-point-five million dollars, to accommodate the state revenue.
This was just a pass through.
Yes.
So, can I motion for resolution twenty-two-five dash sixteen?
There's a motion for twenty-two-five sixteen.
Second.
And a question?
Commissioner Pador?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
County administrator, so that's you, Tim, to go ahead with that.
Okay, excellent. On behalf of the Tax Claim Bureau, approve a resolution of the Skookel County Board of Commissioners appointing Lisa Yanek, Denise Burke, Nicole Field, Justin Meadows, Joseph Gerchuk, and Janice Whitaker, who are vested with all duties and powers thereunder for posting and service of all notices, and to make personal service required by the Pennsylvania Real Estate Sale Law for the twenty-twenty-five Upset Tax Sale, and file with the Bureau a written proof of service setting forth the name, person served, date, time, and place of service, and attachment of a copy of the notice which was served.
Yeah, we'll just approve all under, okay, Mr. Chairman.
On behalf of tax assessment, approval to hire Stephen Mazeluski, West Mountain Township, to the Auxiliary Board of Appeals, to sit on a three-panel board for the purpose of hearing appeals being scheduled in September and October twenty-twenty-five related to the valuation established by Vision Government Solutions at a rate of twenty dollars per hour. On behalf of MIS, approve a three-year purchase agreement with CDW for Microsoft Defender Program. The three-year cost is twenty-five thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars, and the term ends July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight.
Yeah, motion approved of three items, put by Linda for the town administrator.
So moved.
Second.
And a question?
Commissioner Pador?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Human resources.
Uh, good evening, commissioners in the prison, we have the appointment of Alexander Getch, direction officer, part-time, grade is twenty-five point four-three-eight-zero for the contract, effective ninth fifteen twenty-five, and in maintenance, the appointment of James Shidley Building Superintendent, grade is twenty-six point forty-eight, effective nine twenty-nine twenty-four twenty-five. All appointments are pending drug test and physical, or appropriate all actions involving salary, or for positions being created or pending salary board approval.
And then motion for the prison and the maintenance appointments?
So moved.
Second.
And a question?
Commissioner Pador?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, I just want to mention too, there was a, a video done about the county, her work by Juwan, uh, State Representative Juwan Starre, it was a really good video. It showed, uh, the state police there training. It was a really good video. It showed, uh, the state police there training, uh, the military there training, state police doing their high-speed maneuvers, uh, the refueling of helicopters for, I think, lifeline, none of that. Uh, it was just a really good form of a video. I don't know, it's, I think it's on Juann's website.
Yes, it was also a, uh, heart transplant.
Heart transplant person.
Uh, that the, uh.
Flew in.
Came in overnight, yeah.
So it's a really good video with, that stresses in terms of the capability of things. So can I motion for adjourn?
So moved, sir.
Salary board for the executive assessments?
There were not.
Public comment for salary board?
Jeff, don't poke people out, though. I'll keep it quick. The Phillies are coming on. The people that are on these par reports, when they get recommended, most likely by a buddy inside or something, do they get vetted? Do they get investigated and maybe call their previous job and?
Yeah, they go through the normal hiring process. Honestly, I don't even know how many of these people are, like, outside of this.
Right. So does HR do that then? Do they?
HR does it, or their, or I guess the, kind of the department too could do it, depending on what it is, right?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear him over the fan. The two people that are on the par report for today, were they, did you vet them? Like, did you personally go through and contact, like, previous employers or?
Like, is any of it?
No.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Any other public comments for salary board? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, uh, the August twenty-seventh meeting?
So moved, sir.
Second.
And a question?
Commissioner Qudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And First Deputy Controller, Senta?
Yes.
Can motion approve, uh, words at, uh, minutes from the September third meeting?
So moved.
Second.
And a question?
Commissioner Qudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
First Deputy Controller, Senta?
Yes.
Human resources.
Uh, we have one item. Commissioners in maintenance sent salary for James Shidley, Building Superintendent, rate is twenty-six forty-eight, effective nine twenty-nine twenty-five. That is all.
Can I motion for sent salary for maintenance?
And motion for the maintenance salary.
Second.
And a question?
Commissioner Qudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
First Deputy Controller, Senta?
Yes.
Any new business for salary board?
Uh, sorry, I'm not, you're, you're right on.
Uh, can I, what do you adjourn? Uh, retirement board, report of my executive decisions?
There were not.
Public comment for retirement board?
Oh, you're due, okay. One more per question.
Okay, we're hurrying. Uh, can I motion approve the August thirteenth minutes?
So moved.
Second. And a question?
Commissioner Qudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
First Deputy Controller, Senta?
Yes.
Treasury AI?
Yeah.
Controllers report?
Good evening. During the month of August twenty twenty-five, two members received retirements of two hundred fifty-three thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars with pro rata payments of one thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars. Seven members received refunds of forty-three thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars. Two members received rollovers of fifty thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars. One beneficiary received a payment of a hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars. The market value of the retirement fund as of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five was a hundred eighty million nine hundred seventy-one thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. The total market value of the retirement fund as of this morning, September tenth, twenty twenty-five, is one hundred eighty-one million two hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars. Thank you.
Motion for the controllers report?
So moved, sir.
Second.
And a question?
Commissioner Qudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
First Deputy Controller, Senta?
Yes.
And Treasury AI?
Yes.
Uh, any new business for our retirement board?
Welcome to return.
Thank you, everybody.